Can everyone hear me? We've got 5:29, we're live on Facebook already. And y'all are able to mute and unmute yourselves, correct? Thank you, Mary. Um, so, and I'm here with Chief and he's further enough away from me that I can take my mask off so my glasses don't fog up and I can read the agenda. We'll give it another minute, we'll wait on Gary. We do have a quorum, but we'll give it another minute because we also have guests, Coons Environmental, joining us. But I'm not seeing them in the waiting room yet. And it's just now 5:30, so we'll give them just a minute. We were able to take care of a family that was displaced from their home today, thanks to the civitan club, I'll mention that. They've come through again. And we've had a lot of that, and I don't think I've kept y'all posted on everything, but the civitan club and the Methodist churches has really been there for families of the school and families of the city and the community. So another one, another one tonight has a roof over their heads for another night, so. To the civitan club. Okay. All right. Okay, and Wendy, yeah, there's Wendy. Wendy, you ready, right? Good to go. Okay, so we'll start the meeting. The workshop, March 2nd, 2021, and we don't have our guests, so we may jumble the agenda a bit, but we'll go ahead and start. First, it's a library week, library month in April, and I think April 4th through 11th, I believe, is a library week in which we'll celebrate the week. We'll go ahead and read the proclamation at next week's meeting. Since our meeting will fall after that, will fall somewhere in the middle of that week. So we'll go ahead and read the proclamation to get people aware of that and our beloved little library, so. And I don't see Josh or Claire on for item number two, Chandler Park bids, and I'm gonna check my phone to see if Josh has texted. So we'll come, we'll come back to that one. And go to item number three, Main Street crosswalk intersection upgrades, those bids are out for contractors. And still on a fine timeline there, we hope to be able to approve, get the bids in sometime this month and approve at next month's April meeting for those bundled projects that will hopefully save us a little money doing both of them at one time. Any questions about that? Okay. So item number four, mask mandate extension, how are we feeling about extending that another month or two? Everybody good, good with that? Yeah. And I'll touch on this again, but the GMA, was anybody on the GMA call today? The GMA call today mentioned the Georgia's numbers and the they plateaued, but they're, they're not, they're not going down. And so there's good news, but some of those news that caught my attention was the fact that Georgians aren't vaccinating at the rate that we should be, we're behind. And I forget the percentage, but I can forward that and bring that to next week's meeting. But at the rate we're going now, the state of Georgia won't reach herd immunity. And there are a large number of vaccines in the freezers around the state, so I'll get those numbers to be more specific with everybody next week. But as you're talking to citizens, just promote that, it's almost the same thing as the masks were last year. If everybody will go ahead and get the vaccine that can, that enables the state to get to herd immunity. So, and there's a certain percentage that makes, it'll make more sense to you if I bring you those numbers, and I'm sorry I don't have them with me today. But I will get them off the presentation and get those to you where it'll make more sense and you can talk to our citizens about it when you meet them in the streets, but encourage, but do, I know you are, but encourage everyone to get the vaccine when they can. It helps the whole state, helps the whole country. There are several states, and I think we're in, we're pretty close to the bottom as far as the percentage rate to get to herd immunity with vaccinations. So what are we thinking? We want to extend it into at least April, probably May?
I would say May. I just saw an update about 15 minutes ago that some breaking news, the president said every interested and eligible adult in our country should have access to the vaccine by the end of May.
Okay.
Yeah, I think May would be smart. Also, I just put a note in the chat about, about this, like, how do we as city leadership promote and, you know, try to get folks who are in Phase 1A to make an appointment when I think, from what I've heard, you know, from public health, the UGA and everybody that I'm talking to, they kind of hit a bit of a, like, they're ready for folks in 1A to keep coming in, keep coming in, because, you know, until they roll out 1B statewide, they can't help any, you know, they can't vaccine anybody else. So folks in 1A that haven't gone yet, we should be absolutely encouraging that.
Agreed, and we can do our part, you know, social media and website and things like that, maybe there's some that we can put up on the website as well.
I agree, we should extend it through May and then evaluate at that point.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just texting Josh. So I agree, I think we can go through May and then evaluate, and then if we need to go through June, we can. But we'll put that on the agenda for next week to extend that mask mandate. It seems to be working well, so. And with that, we'll also continue to discuss in-person meetings, probably a good, and they're, they're joining now. This is a they're to have our in-person meetings is probably about, you know, we'll continue to discuss that, but that's probably a good target, too. Possibly May or June, probably June, we'll get through, we'll get through May and maybe bring everybody back in June. I will say that we did go ahead and open rental, pavilion rental back up in June to start in June, and we'll, of course, monitor things, and if they're not, if we're not in a better spot, then we will certainly, we're making people aware that are renting it, that that's the case, that we'll be monitoring the COVID-19 pandemic, and if things don't improve drastically, we may have to refund their deposits and cancel out the rentals. But we also, just to let you know, I would like us to strongly consider not renting the depot anymore and using the depot as a civic meeting place only because of the work that's been done in there to preserve that mural. I'd like to hear your thoughts about that, that's kind of a bold move. It's a great place. We could, we could increase the rental fee, I just can't, I don't think renting it would be is appropriate for that building at the, at the rate that we're, especially does anybody have anything to add to that?
Could we get some numbers on how much income it generally brings in?
Yeah. And we
I agree.
Yeah, we can do that. As you know, we increased the rental rate during the pandemic, but nobody's, you know, we haven't rented it since, so. Discuss before the rate that we charged, it really was a wash when you end up cleaning the facility and renting it and cleaning it. So with the increased rate, it might be a little better, but we may want to, if we do want to continue renting it, we may want to just increase that rate even higher to where if people really want you know, so that we don't make it but, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I see your point. I was in there the other day and got to take a peek. It looks incredible inside now, and the the mural is beautiful. I mean, it looks like a museum in there now. So yeah, I definitely want to look at what was it bringing in, who were maybe the most frequent renters? And just kind of taking a look at it again after that.
Okay. We could do that. So that's, and that's just, we can do that in the next workshop, so I can, I'll bring those, we'll get those numbers together, Wendy and I will.
We can talk more about this if tonight's not the best time, but I have the sense that with most of the rentals, at least the paying rentals are birthday parties, baby showers, that kind of thing. Wendy, would you tend to agree with that?
Yeah, is definitely baby showers, some birthday parties.
So are we gonna offer any alternative to people for those types of occasions?
The community center. Communities.
The center.
You know, with the name is a
The community center is, isn't it more expensive? I know it used to be.
God, you seem to be frozen now, my friend. Can anybody else hear him?
No.
Nope, not right now. Let's see.
Somebody sent him a text or a chat. He must know what that means all.
He left the building. Elvis has left the building.
Well, Josh, it looks like you're hosting.
We could, we could certainly find ways to fill the time till Dot comes back.
Hi, Josh, hi Claire.
I don't know, Mary. What's the protocol, Mary? Mayor Pro Tem supposed to take over now or what?
To help back in.
I don't know. I think probably to save time, we ought to let Josh and his folks bid and make their presentation.
I think that's a good idea, because if he doesn't have his table maybe a while before he gets back.
I'll ask a question.
The two now, man?
Yeah, it looks like they're
Oh geez. What's going on?
That's okay with me, if that's okay with everybody else.
To let, to let Josh go ahead. Are you comfortable doing that, Josh?
Oh, I don't, I don't mind at all. I don't, I prefer if Mayor Dodd was in attendance, but I don't mind moving forward if you guys are okay with it. There's no, no concern about our time, so don't worry about us in that sense. But I'm happy to get started. Give you the basic update, okay? Amanda, it looks like you're frozen on my end. Are you, can you hear me okay? There you go.
I can hear you. Is my audio roboting?
Just a little bit, but you're still active. You froze for just a moment. Okay, so we have most everybody. Let me give you just a quick update, since we did talk the initial time about moving this project forward. We had sort of a concept design at that point in time, and we have furthered that into a set of construction documents. I'll see if I can, if I'm allowed to share. Yep, okay, can you guys see my screen okay? So just to kind of give you an idea of sort of how this process works, this is where we, sort of what we discussed originally as the design for Chandler Park and sort of the terminus off the Firefly Trail. What we did since we met last time is sort of create a, what we call a construction document package that goes into a lot of detail about how something like that gets built. I apologize if you guys are familiar with this. Maybe being fairly elementary about this, but it basically splits the the work into sort of divisions or subjects, make sure that we've got everything covered and contractors know exactly what we're asking for. This page is simple, it's kind of a, just a site demolition page, it says we need to sort of prep the site. This is the proposed site plan that just shows in a plan view that image that we started with, geometry, hardscape materials, all the things that a contractor is going to need to pull quantities and prepare an estimate. That goes into some detailed drawings. This in particular is the centerpiece with the granite sort of sculptural base to the bike sculpture that we're going to mount with information on George and civitan club, things like that. These are just pavement, construction details, kind of the nuts and bolts of, of how to get something done. And there's a lot of information here. Again, everything from that granite monument to what the sign's going to be built with and what that's going to look like. Layout plan, grading and drainage plan, this is something that Steve had sort of begun the process of, that we inherited and, and took over, and this basically just shows where and how water will flow through the site, making sure that we're not flooding the park and that we can kind of build this to a more suitable condition that is now with respect to how stormwater's working. Again, a lot of nuts and bolts here, there's things that cost money in this process that you need to make sure you're kind of covering. Erosion and sediment control is a big sort of line item, and that's what this page, you guys are probably familiar with Silfinch, but this is the level of sort of detail that we have to get in for these projects and, and then finishing all of that off with a planting plan and appropriate details for, for the plants. Gary, I know you had asked about the plants and making sure that there is a comment or had the ability to comment on these plants relative to maintenance and something that would work well for you guys. And, and these are just placeholders right now. When we have that conversation, we can certainly change this planting plan as needed to make sure we're addressing any concerns, so. But that is the package, that's what we sent out for bid, we sent that out on February 12th, and there are two components of it. The part that you just, that I just walked you through, and give me just one moment, I'll pull the second part out. There's also a another component that Steve and Mayor Dodd asked us to look at and get a price for as long as we're getting the work priced, and that is to help eliminate some of the standing water that's been occurring at the bottom side. The bookstore and library over here, that ultimately we would redirect some water into this area and provide a piped outfall, which it doesn't have right now. So this is an engineered drawing that just shows how that could be done and ultimately a pricing exercise. So this is the piece of this puzzle that we're waiting to get back at this point in time. And this, the pricing is due from the contractors this Friday. So slowly getting all the pieces in the, the park plan right now is coming in a little bit over budget, and we're given the preliminary numbers that we've received, we're currently looking at ways to get this back into budget. And that's looking at things like the base for these brick pavers and how we might be able to change that. You won't see a change on the surface, but we can save some money with what's below it. Similar effect for the granite, we're looking at ways to just make that granite more affordable and, but still maintain the design intent. I think Mayor Dodd actually, again, I don't want to speak for him, but I know he has a meeting tomorrow with John Campbell from Dixie Granite. And I think we're going to see how and if John may be able to help out and looking at the granite, find ways for us to make that part of the element a little bit more affordable. So all that to say, what we had hoped for coming into this night's meeting was sort of a clear low bidder on the information that he had prepared. But given that extra piece that we put out there and the time that the subs needed to price it, we got to wait till Friday to get that back. By then, we'll have some of these value engineering options reviewed and priced as well from the bidders. And so our, our goal, next steps moving forward is on Friday to get that information, prepare a package in advance of next Tuesday night's meeting that you would be able to see and review and potentially ask questions about relative to the final bid, who the apparent low bidder is and what a proposed contract amount would be to engage moving forward in construction. So we're a little behind and a little over budget, and I will take responsibility for those two items, but we're, we're working hard to make sure we've got something that you feel comfortable voting on next Tuesday, so that we can still kind of move this forward for Georgia's birthday on the 24th.
Thank you, Josh. And your team, is that, is that everything?
That's everything right now, yes, Mayor Dodd.
Sorry, and I guess my computer froze up, but I'm back on now, so thank you for the presentation. Does anybody have any questions? I do have a meeting, Steve Rice and I have a meeting with John Campbell tomorrow. John Campbell is also a member of the Winterbell Civitan Club, he's done a lot of work around the city. So we may be able to wiggle this thing back into budget based on our meeting tomorrow, we hope. Josh, would that be accurate?
That is correct, that is correct.
And I have, I feel like we can, but we'll, we'll certainly be able to get closer to being able to put the package together, and Josh will, will be able to give us a recommendation Friday. Do you think that's, is that what you were saying? Are you going to get the information together to send to us?
Yeah, that is, that is it. Mayor Dodd, we should have everything we need by Friday at 4 o'clock. And, and so we'll be able to get all the numbers assembled, send them to you so you know where we're staying at that point in time. And what, what we intend to do between Friday and Tuesday is whoever the apparent low bidder is at that time, meet with them, make sure that they have everything covered in that price and that there are no gaps between our documents and their price so that what we present to you guys is a solid number on Tuesday.
Perfect, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Josh?
I have a comment. If possible, it would be great if that weeping willow on the, that's between the library and front porch bookstore could be saved. Anybody that's attended the front porch concert has probably noticed that that weeping willow is much beloved by neighborhood children.
Okay. Thank you. I will look into that because I think that is potentially in the footprint of the grading over there, and that's something we can modify. We'll, we'll look into that, thank you.
That's a popular tree.
Okay.
Um, okay, any other questions or comments, concerns? Josh, Claire, Dustin, thank you very much for all your hard work on this, it's beautiful.
You're welcome. We're happy to help, thanks again for the opportunity, and we'll be back in touch with you as soon as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Did I turn it over to you, Josh, or did you turn it back over to me?
Uh, I don't think, I don't, let me, let me see. I don't think I'm the host, Dot, am I?
No, I think we're good.
Okay.
Thanks for taking, um, sorry I dropped out there.
No, that's okay. We were just trying to fill the time, but I think I gave you the whole presentation in the process, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll see y'all.
Okay, thanks.
So yeah, everybody be on the lookout, so Friday, well, as soon as I get that, we'll forward that to everybody, so you can have the weekend to look at if you have any questions between Friday and the meeting, we can try to get those answered for you so that we can move the project forward. I don't think, we're not behind, we're just we'll just have to get it done during the week, this week, but that's, that was going to happen anyway. And still keep us on target for groundbreaking on March 24th, we hope, so. Anything else there? And sorry that I dropped out, I didn't apologize for that. All right, moving on, the Winterbell Education Task Force, this is just to update you in, with what's going on with our school and our children being online and not in person. A month or so ago, I reached out to the principals of Winterbell Elementary and Coil to put together a task force. We've since assembled a group of very excited teachers that were putting together a plan, that's a backup plan for cases like this. And in case in August, we're not able to go back to school, a backup plan that, that might employ some of the city's outdoor structures to be used to get teachers and students in-person learning. One thing we're going to put together and I'll keep you all updated and bring it to y'all as we do is, is an enrichment program in the summer to get our kids back up to the levels they've, they've been deficient in because of the, because of the online learning, and it's just, it's just difficult for every single grade. So I want to make sure that the children in our community have an opportunity to get back up to speed with wherever they are deficient and with whatever classrooms they need to be brought back up to speed in. So we will continue to have these discussions, the task force is going to meet with me, it's about 20 people, and the teachers are extremely excited, there's a lot of excitement behind getting this together and some autonomy from the district and that we can do this, and maybe put together a blueprint for other communities to be able to use over the summer or during, you know, in the future, if there's any reason to, if we're not able to be back in classrooms. And to the point where coils even, the local school governance team funds are being used to build outdoor structures at that school. So with what we have here and Winterbell Elementary and Coil, we might be able to do something special for our children and their education, and so they don't get left too far behind. There's an, that's just an update for you, and I'll continue to update you on the Winterbell Task Force as we meet. CARES Act funding with the, the new bill proposed by this, the current administration, there's a substantial amount of funding, the city could There's a substantial amount of funding. The city could see around $227,000 if this passes as it is today. So that's, that's an update for you and I'll, you know, you, you can monitor that situation with me, but I'll, I'll continue to update you there as I, as I learn more. HPC Design Guidelines and Boundaries, this is just on here for discussion. The public hearings have been had by the HPC and there were some recurring themes. And if, if, we, we won't take any official action on this until at least April. We have to get our recommendations back from the Historic Preservation Commission before we do anything. And then everything will go through David, our city attorney from that point on, because it's, there's some strict statutes and regulations that we have to follow as a municipality. So we're going to let him steer us through that once they give those recommendations back to us. But I, I put it on here to open it up for any discussion that you might want to have tonight. The further we are along with what we feel like we can approve, the better off we'll be. No hard deadline on, on getting this done, but I simply put it on here for discussion.
I would just like to say that apparently some of the things in the HPC guidelines are already in planning and zoning ordinances. And there seems to be sort of a lack of enforcement of code stuff with some things. So I sort of questioned whether we need to add such an extensive other layer of regulations.
So what exactly are you saying?
Uh, I think.
The HPC has already been set up, so that's been done. These are, these are, we're talking.
Talking about the guidelines, the 80 pages, single spaced guidelines. It just seems too much to me and too much of an imposition on people's private property rights.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else? Any other comments? I have some some comments about the boundaries. And I think a lot of citizens in the, in the Winter Hills area share, may share the, the same thoughts that I have about it. But I, I for one, don't know that we need to, just to allocate resources to including Winter Hills and the boundaries as of yet. If it's not going to be a focus, I don't think there's any reason to include that, that neighborhood. I never, I never have thought that. So I, I, I'm in favor of changing that to, to, to remove Winter Hills for the time being, you know, until further down the road. They may need to be, they may need to be included unless, unless there are some, some benefits that, that, that those citizens may come forward with, that they want to see by being included in the, in the boundaries between now and the time we approve this. But as of now, I think my focus is really elsewhere with regard to the boundaries. And the, and the, and the resources that'll be allocated throughout this process to those boundaries. Any thoughts there? But again, but again, we'll, we can certainly wait for the recommendations. I just, I'm, I'm voicing my opinion now with regard to the boundaries.
I think I could, I could agree with you Dodd on that. Just because a house is 50 years old, we shouldn't just say, okay, that's going to be a historic district.
Right.
We need to, I think we need to concentrate as a city on those areas that are going to be most viewed and, and most used by our citizenry as well as outside visitors. And the second, second point I want to make is to Brenda's concern about overlap with the Planning and Zoning Board rules. Bob did say that he's going to work with us and HPC to eliminate that overlap. Either HPC takes it or they take it on the zoning board, on the planning and zoning. It, it still has a lot of paperwork to, to, to go through to to, to come out with a, with a firm, I guess ordinance law, whatever we want to, however we want to set of rules. You know, it's, it's just something that's going to take some time and I don't think we need to get, I guess, caught up in the minutia yet.
Correct. Okay. Anybody else?
I agree with the Winter Hills piece. I've heard from, you know, a lot of my neighbors and a lot of homeowners in Winter Hills. It doesn't quite make sense to me either to be included. I know that's a popular opinion. However, I think the only negative side effect to that would be after hearing, at the public hearing, Kim speak of like the benefits of being included and potential project or grant money. I would, you know, that's kind of the only thing that's sticking in my head of not being able to participate in those things. So I just want people to be aware of both sides.
Yeah, and we'll continue to talk about that because that is a concern to me too. We'll continue to talk about that as we go through the process of approving the guidelines and the boundaries. Anybody else?
Could I suggest that when we look at the two sets of guidelines and ordinances that maybe restrictions on solar panels could be hopefully eliminated? I just think climate change is too important to put any barriers up to renewable energy, energy sources.
We're, we're allowing solar panels?
Apparently not on the fronts of houses.
In the history, we can have that conversation. Okay, anything else? Okay. So we'll, this will be, you know, it'll take us a couple of months to get through it at least. But as we get through it, just keep providing comments and commentary and we should have the guideline. We should have the recommendation back any day. They have 15 days to get it to us. So we should have that back next week sometime, I would say by the end of the week at least. Moving on, some more good news. The Marigold Market applied for a grant from Georgia Organics. And they were awarded $3,600 to go towards this year's Marigold Market. And I'll forward you the breakdown of what that covers. When I can find it, I looked for it today. I was on a presentation and, and I have seen the, the, what we applied for and were awarded. But I'll just forward you that as, as I find it tomorrow. But that's great. They did a great job applying for the grant, Laura and Sherry. And we're thrilled to, to accept another grant. And it also includes us in an organization now that'll be beneficial to the market moving forward. So I will send all that to you. Moving on, any, any comments about that? Moving on to the next barbecue pit, which brings me to barbecue pit upgrades. It's time to repurpose that building. We're not using that as a barbecue pit anymore. It's kind of became home base for the market. And we can start to reach our goal or start to move close to our goals of affordable fresh food on the east side. And we're not calling the, the market board is, is doing away with the word food waste and rightfully so. And we're going with food abundance. So this year during the markets, all the farmers in the area that have excess food and that they don't sell, we'd like to be able to be a hub for that, a small hub, but be able to be a hub where we can offer it at reduced rate or free to families in our area in need that qualify. So I would like to, and Tom and I have discussed making some upgrades to the barbecue pit. Taking out the cinder blocks in the middle. They haven't been used in, I don't know how long. Kind of cleaning up the area, hooking the water back up. And, and, and closing that porch on the end as a cold or cool room that would house a cold, a cool bot, they call them, which is basically an air conditioner that, that runs to keep food cool while it's being stored in there and then a chest freezer. And the cost for all this will be approximately no more than $3,500, probably a little less than that. But I would like to put this before council next week for a vote to enclose that portion of the market. There are issues on the end of that barbecue pit anyway, whenever it rains. And, and the, the water that accumulates and the mud and the debris that accumulates on that porch is always difficult. Tom, you're on. Do you have anything to add?
No. Some of you might remember that there was a kitchen there before, when they remodeled, they turned off, I, I think. And, but anyway, that's, it's pretty self-explanatory, whatever you said. It's just as simply putting up three, three walls and adding a, a door. And it'd make, it'd make a really nice cold box.
Yeah. So, and it'll get us, it'll grow the market. There's still a lot of excitement around the market anyway. We're still not sure whether we're going to be able to have an in-person market or not. You know, we're taking that day by day, but we'll still have the drive-through. So we're getting ready for both. But it'll, it'll allow us to start to get towards our goal of reimagining the farmer's market into a Marigold Market that, that does supply affordable fresh food on the east side, which is a need for our food insecure citizens. Any questions or comments there? And I think it'll be a good use of that building. And Tom and I even thought there might be a way to have, you know, to possibly look at concessions during the summer for families visiting in the city. If there's a freezer in there, might be a good concession area for our, for our park during the week and during the summertime. If that were, if, if we're able to do that, might be a good use of that. So we might be able to get a couple of uses out of that building that's not, not currently being used for a whole lot. Okay. If there are no comments or questions, I'll move on. Speed, speed limit signs. Tom, I, I brought the two quotes with me. We went and I can't remember, we did not put up the solar powered and we are not, we didn't want to go with the solar power. We're just going to go with the battery, the battery powered rechargeable batteries, correct? Okay, so I'll resend that quote out to everybody. You, I sent you the data that that speeds, speed limit sign collected. It sure did its job in calming the traffic on that road. And I know I heard that from citizens. So I think it's a worthwhile endeavor that we get one of those that Public Works, Tom, and Chief Foulter can, can kind of locate around the city as needed to help with traffic calming. So I'll send the quote back out. That, that would be the, the lower quote, the $2,700 quote. I'll send that back out to everybody and put that on the agenda for a vote next week. And with that, and this kind of goes into the Main Street speed limits. I sent you a, a traffic study. So part of our regional commission project that we've, we've, that's been ongoing to calm traffic on Main Street to figure out how to lower the speed limits on Main Street. It's going to require a, it is going to require a traffic study. And it's going to require a traffic study that can be signed off on by PE, Professor, or engineer. And this proposal for $7,000 is just that. This is who Regional Commission and WA Engineering reached out to. And they've given us this proposal. So it'd be an independent study that would be required by GDOT if we were going to go to them and ask for our speed limits to be reduced. You know, I'd kind of like to hear if, if everybody feels like we should go ahead and move forward with that, using TSPLOST dollars to cover the amount of that speed study. It seems like it's something that we need to do. We've done them with the county before. We could do another one with the county. We'd get the same information or we'd get the information that we've always gotten from the county. And if we were going to go to GDOT with any official request for lowering the speed limits, we would have to get an independent outside study done by an independent engineer to, to have that conversation. So if y'all would like me to put, go ahead and put this on the agenda for next week, I'm happy to, to go ahead and get that in motion. It seems like something we're going to end up doing in the future, no matter what. Citizens are, are very concerned still. But I think some of the things we've done with the truck ordinance and some of the things that, there's a lot of presence on, I was talking with Chief Foulter earlier. We've, we've been, we've had a lot of presence on our streets and it's, and it's working. But I think, I think this is the next step. If y'all would like me to go ahead and put it on the agenda for next week.
Yeah, the funding Dodd, where's that coming from? Is that TSPLOST?
TSPLOST.
Okay.
Yeah, and just, and I wanted to let y'all know. Thank you, Gary, for that question. I wanted to let y'all know that TSPLOST, I think we can send this out to you. Currently, the bank are about, we have $276,000 in the bank with TSPLOST dollars, but we've yet to receive our 2021 payout, which is $193,000. It's the third of five. So we'll have two more after this year. After this year's payout, we'll have, in, in a month or so, we'll have $469,159 in the bank, TSPLOST. So when you look at Chandler Park at approximately or between $150,000, $200,000. Main Street crosswalks, $70,000 to $100,000. A speed study at 7K and speed limit signs around at 3,000 to 7,000, depending on whether we want one or two. We're still well within that. We're still well under our budget there or with cash on hand. And we still have the money that we have on reserve for the road resurfacing, which was $250,000 over five years. So we're still looking good with TSPLOST. We haven't spent a whole lot of TSPLOST dollars.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Would that study be done before the island, islands and things were put in or would it be done after?
That's a great question. We, we would wait and do it after.
Okay.
And that, that, that might be a reason not, we, we can probably push this off and put this in our April agenda. You know, I just wanted to bring it up to everybody because we would probably, we wouldn't do it until after, after those were put in. Because we just have to, we just have to do it again.
I would think with that drastic a change, it might, it might take care of itself a little bit.
You're, you're right. So we, and, and I'm fine with waiting on this. That's a great point. So I will wait, I will wait on that. And what I'll do is I'll, I'll just confirm with Buck and with John Devine that that's the, the appropriate thing to do. And if, if they agree, we'll hold off and put this in the April meetings. They good with everybody? Okay. Let's see, business leaders meeting. We had a really good meeting a couple of weeks ago with our local leaders updating them on current state of the city with regard to our ordinances and the different, the different, and basically we covered everything throughout the entire city, even the projects we were doing on Main Street and the traffic calming. We're providing just to keep them up to speed on, on, on everything. And we'll continue to have those as I used to have them in person. We'll continue to schedule those out for the year and provide updates where we can. Amanda, was there anything specific I needed to update from the DDA standpoint or as from that conversation?
No, I don't think so. One thing I just wanted to clarify was if that's something that I know you have quarterly.
if that's something that I know you have quarterly. You know, DDA, I'll speak from the DDA, like we can partner with you, we can be invited, like whatever you want us to do, but I would love for our next one, I think that was some feedback we got, if it was safe to do it more in person outside, but we'll, we'll, we'll have to see about that, but.
Yes, and we'll definitely, and like we talked about, getting that back, that first one back and kind of reaching out to everybody. First, we'll get the DDA included on all the, all the rest of the meetings. Okay. And it was a great, it was a good meeting, a lot of positive comments and a lot of good conversations, so good to get those started, restarted. You've gotten all the committee members, we have one for the Firefly Trail, Paul Bunce. And then we have two, we have two library board members that we need to approve next week, so I'll put those on the agenda. And you have, everybody has the applications today?
Last month, didn't someone say there were four applicants to the Library Advisory Board? Because when I was going back through what the ones we had received, I only had three.
Okay. You've got four?
I remember the same, Brenda, I remember there being four, but now I have to look back through my email.
Okay, we'll send them back out tomorrow.
We got Michelle Calquit early, is she one of the three or is she the fourth?
That's one of the three. I had Calquit, Watwood and Derwin.
And Paul Bunce also applied for the Library Advisory.
Oh, oh, okay, I was thinking he had applied for the Firefly Local Advisory. Okay, well, then maybe I did have the fourth one, I may have just been thinking that Paul was for a different one, sorry about that.
It's okay, yes, he applied for both. Okay, so we'll vote on those members next week.
I have one question about that. I think I saw in an email from Wendy that some applications were not ready to be voted on, did I read that correctly?
Those are business, business licenses.
You're right, thank you.
From last night's P and Z meeting, they tabled a couple of business licenses to get a little more information. Okay, moving on, Citizen Committee updates, I don't think we have anybody of this, you know, doing the meetings like this, I might push those out to the the second Tuesday meetings. We'll certainly get an update from the Firefly Trail Local Action Committee this week after tonight, I'm guessing. After, if the Maryland Commission do vote on the trail section tonight. I'm looking here, okay, yeah, so the Regional Commission update story mapping is in process. They are, they are currently working to fine tune that and to to tell a really great story based around the the Firefly Trail and our commercial district, so that'll be an ongoing thing throughout the year and then, you know, every year we'll, they'll continue to work with us to update that. Once we get it, once we get it up and on the, on the website, then we can really let it start working for our citizens and telling them about the projects that are going on real time, who's funding them, when they'll be completed. So that they'll know what's going on in their neighborhoods. The Complete Streets Project was approved, so we look to start to kick that off soon with John Devine. The Code Retreat, I'm still trying to wait, waiting on some dates from Eva on that, I'll try to send those out next week hopefully and get that done within the next month or two for our P and Z code review, update, upgrade. Augment. Speed limits, we talked about that. Those are, that's still a work in progress, so we've got four great projects going on with our friends at the Northeast Georgia Regional Commission. And they've all been approved, so. City Council concerns, issues for the agenda? Everybody's good? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I'm, I'm going to remain concerned, y'all just know this, until we can get our city books audited. And I understand that Mr. Hawkins had a death in his family. So the audit, separate from what I'm about to ask you. He, his son died and Jerry's been our auditor for a long time, right Wendy, 10 years or more? I wondered, does, would the city consider sending a memorial contribution to the Penfield Addiction Ministry, which the family requested?
We did. Earlier today, Wendy and I discussed that, and I don't know if she got it done today, but it will be done tomorrow, and thank you for the recommendation.
Great, thank you for doing that, I appreciate it.
So we know, we just kind of took it and ran with it.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Rais out with Jerry for sure. That's a terrible loss, so be thinking about him and he's done a lot of work for the, for the city and we appreciate that, and I do remain concerned about that as well. Mary, so it's constantly on my radar for the audit. I think a lot of cities to, and talking with Wendy and some of the other cities, a lot of cities are in the same, but we are, for some reason, it's just one of those things that that's been caught up in the pandemic and COVID and everybody's behind and wondering where their audits are. So we'll continue to push for it. And continue to bring it up, keep it up.
Central.
No, I agree, I agree, thank you. Any other issues? Okay, with that, we will go ahead and move into an executive session tonight, so if I could have a motion to move us into executive session for a few minutes.
So moved.
I have a motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, we will move into.